And welcome to the Town of Lexington Town Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall, Monday, May 7th, 2018. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times on the town's Information Channel 2 over the next week. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Corners.
Hello.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manus.
Good evening.
And to her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Jason Williams from Riverbend Community Church to please come forward and offer invocation for tonight's meeting. Jason, thanks for being with us.
Thank you, sir. Let's bow together, please. God, on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight, Lord, we just want to thank you for your blessings, for your love and for your grace, God, for health, for sustenance, and for community. Lord, we thank you for our town. We thank you for Lexington, and we thank you for the way you're moving and working in our town. Lord, we thank you for the freedom that you give us, God. Lord, we thank you for the governing authorities that you've established. Lord, we pray for our mayor, and we pray for our town council. God, I ask you to give them wisdom. Lord, I pray you give them wisdom in the conflicting interests and issues that they may be facing today. But I pray as they make decisions that affect many lives that you would lead and direct them, God. Lord, we pray for unity in our town, in our town council, Lord, and in our state and in our country. God, we just pray for the agenda tonight. Lord, we ask that it would benefit those in and around Lexington, and, Lord, that your will be done, and in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Williams, thank you very much for being with us again. At this time, are there any former or active military veterans with us tonight? Mr. Wooten, if you don't mind, please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, as everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Honorable Chris Wooten, thank you very much. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and report on our executive session this evening. This evening during executive session, we had two legal matters, one discussion of pending litigation and one discussion of legal advice regarding a town ordinance. We had two contractual issues, one economic development matter and one issue regarding a utilities contract. We had two personnel items. One was a board and commission appointment, and the other was a routine personnel review. No vote was taken in our executive session. Do have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report.
Salute.
We have a motion by Mr. Baker and a second by Ms. Manus. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is enough. Any deletions on tonight's agenda? Are there any deletions from the agenda, May 7th, 2018? Hearing none, we will move right into our regular meeting. Approval of the minutes, copies of the minutes from the special council meeting and council work session of April 16, 2018 were provided in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections to special council meeting, April 16, 2018, and work session, April 16, 2018? Hearing none, I have a motion to approve those minutes.
Salute.
We have a motion by Councilmember Corners, a second by Councilmember Manus. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those are approved. We will move right into presentations. Our first presentation, Chief Green, if you don't mind, if you'd come forward. Well, like you would say, "Come on down here, little fella." Got something for you. Chief, thank you very much. This is a short presentation. I'd like to begin our presentations this evening by recognizing our Town of Lexington Police Department, principally Chief Terrence Green, who was awarded the South Carolina Criminal Justice Award for demonstrating true advocacy on behalf of crime victims. He was nominated by Victims Advocate Dee Cochran, who gave an example of his leadership when he helped with the recovery of two underage girls from sex trafficking and the arrest of the two pimps. He consistently supports the needs of victims of crime. Chief Green has purchased food and assisted in the relocation of a victim. His reputation as an approachable leader is demonstrated by the way he runs his department and the support he receives from his staff. We want to congratulate Chief Green upon receiving this award from the South Carolina Criminal Justice Award. Chief Green, thank you very much for it, chief. Chief, again, thank you very much. What a fine example you set. Moving on to our next presentation, I'd like to welcome Director Leroy Smith from the South Carolina Department of Public Safety. If you would, please come to the microphone, and we'll do some presentations for you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and distinguished members of the Town Council. Thanks for having me here today. I am honored to be with you tonight to recognize Lexington's DUI enforcement champions, those officers who are on the front lines right here in Lexington, fighting impaired driving each and every day. On April 11th, the South Carolina Department of Public Safety recognized law enforcement officers and agencies statewide for their efforts in 2017 to enforce the state's DUI laws and remove impaired drivers from South Carolina roadways. South Carolina Department of Public Safety presented awards to officers and agencies in several categories during this year's DUI enforcement recognition and law enforcement DUI challenge ceremonies. It is my privilege to be invited to Lexington tonight to help celebrate the efforts of these officers. For the DUI awards, departments compete against agencies of a similar size. Lexington Police Department competed against other departments with 51 to 100 officers. In 2017, Lexington Police Department set a strategic goal for themselves to improve traffic safety in the community. In order to achieve this goal, the department created a full-time traffic division with four traffic safety officers. Throughout 2017, the Lexington Police Department Traffic and Patrol Divisions worked together to combat impaired driving and made a total of 200 DUI arrests. Wow. This was an increase of 47% over 2016. The department credits the change in large part to the traffic division officers working together on enforcement activities throughout the year, including public safety checkpoints. Since October 2016, two of the department's traffic division officers have worked on a Target Zero Traffic Safety Grant with a shared goal of increasing enforcement, prevention, and education, which includes driving under the influence. And they have done an outstanding job. As a result of their collective efforts, Lexington Police won the Department of the Year Award for departments with 51 to 100 officers. Congratulations to the men and women of the Lexington Police Department, and thank you, Chief Terrence Green, for your leadership. Ma'am, I'm allowing you to present.
Very good. Thank you very much. Congratulations, chief. Y'all do a phenomenal job here. We really appreciate it. Surrounded by... But it takes a good leader to make good people better, yeah? Great job. Congratulations.
Fantastic. Have one more.
Yes, sir.
In addition to winning Department of the Year, an officer with the Lexington Police Department also won Officer of the Year for agencies with 51 to 100 officers. The Officer of the Year is described as a strong advocate against impaired driving who has succeeded in encouraging other officers to increase their DUI enforcement activities. It is my pleasure again to congratulate Patrolman First Class Nick Thompson of the Lexington Police Department on his outstanding honor. Patrolman First Class Thompson has been assigned to the Traffic Division of the Lexington Police Department since July 2015, and in October 2016 took on the responsibility of being part of the Target Zero Safety Grant. Since joining the Traffic Division, Patrolman First Class Thompson has attended over 600 hours of instructions in traffic collision and enforcement-related courses to become a traffic safety officer. He will become a traffic safety instructor later this year. Patrolman First Class Thompson is also a part of Lexington Police Department Alcohol Enforcement Team organized through LRAID Act and conducts underage alcohol compliance checks and party patrols throughout the year within the Town of Lexington. In 2017, he made 56 DUI arrests. Congratulations, Patrolman First Class Thompson.
I need to share a few words with... Chief said no, unfortunately.
For Mr. Mayor, in closing, I want to mention that Chief Green and I were both on program recently to speak at a very different ceremony right here in your community. On April 28th, Department of Public Safety held a ceremony at Lexington Baptist Church remembering 988 people who died on our roadways last year, many of those due to impaired driving. And while the numbers feel like a staggering one, imagine if there weren't men and women like these officers of the Lexington Police Department out there fighting to prevent further such loss of life on our roadways. That is why I am so proud of the officers of the Lexington Police Department who have made it their mission to take impaired drivers off the roadway and make Lexington a safer place. Congratulations. Keep up the great work.
Thank you, Director Smith. What an honor it was to have you here tonight. Thank you for presenting those awards. At this time, we'll move into our next presentation. Chief Terrence Green has a special award to present this evening.
Next time, I won't be behind Director Leroy Smith.
That's hard to follow.
You know, in this day and age, you know, law enforcement is getting a bad rap and people not helping us. But we had the honor to see one of our own citizen and now one of our honorable representative assist the police department. We had an incident where we had a...I won't go in details, but we had a bad guy, and he was just running around, causing havoc. And usually, we tell citizens, "Don't jump on him. Just call 911. Don't do nothing too drastic. We'll get there quickly." But our friend, Chris Wooten, subdued him, and boy, did he subdued him. I think the guy rather come with the police department than say it to Chris. But he did an excellent job helping the police department in a time, you know, when we need help. And that's what we like about our citizens. They really love the police department here in Lexington. So, Mr. Mayor, if you come down, we want to present this award to Honorable Chris Wooten. And it states, "In recognition and appreciation of your selfless act of going above and beyond expectation on April 16, 2018, your actions and genuine concern for the community reflect your heroism on you and you who served as a shining example to the citizens of the Town of Lexington. On behalf of the Lexington Police Department, thank you."
Mr. Mayor, while you're coming up, I'd like to say something before Representative Wooten leaves. Chris Wooten is in our neighborhood, and not only the town, but your neighborhood, Hope Free Plantation, appreciates you protecting us. So, thank you very much. I look forward tomorrow to seeing you being sworn in as the newest member of the South Carolina House of Representatives. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief. Our next presentation is Ms. Casey Shealy from the South Carolina Pharmacy Association. If you wouldn't mind, come forward. This is a presentation, "Detera Drug Deactivation System." Welcome, Ms. Shealy.
Thank you. I'm the current president of the South Carolina Pharmacy Association, and we've been asked to come and present these Detera Deactivation Bags to the Town of Lexington. And I just want to give a brief kind of overview of what these bags are, what the purpose is, how we came about them, if I may, and if I also have some to give to the council members and to the staff.
Very good. Yes, absolutely.
So, what I'm passing out here and all the needs for everybody, we have over 500 of these bags, and there's a little information, postcard that's on them that we've been distributing across the state to patients, healthcare providers, pharmacists, hospice nurses, everyone who would interact with or have access to medications that may need to be disposed of properly because we may not use all of them for one reason or another. And this is one of our tactics to help reduce the amount of medications that are available on the street for misuse. So, as we know that we are in a current crisis, opioid crisis, and so the South Carolina Pharmacy Association, through our foundation, the South Carolina Pharmacy Foundation, had a two-year grant that just ended April 30th. And part of our grant is to purchase these bags and distribute them across the state to people who may not have access to a permanent drop box or to a take-back location to help get these medications off the street to help reduce the amount that's available for misuse. So, we have over 500 of these bags that were given to the Town of Lexington. They're simple to use, so the bags that we're going to be giving out are the medium-sized bags. You can put 45 pills in there or six ounces of liquid that you don't need. So, you just open the bag up, put the pills in, put a little bit of water in it, squish it together, and then seal it back up, and you can put it in the trash. So, this is one of the ways that we're helping as pharmacists and as the pharmacy association to help reduce the amount of medications available for misuse.
Very good. So, what it does is makes the pills useless.
Makes them useless, and it doesn't hurt the environment either, and so that's another benefit. So, we're helping to improve disposal methods for medications. There is a permanent drop box here in the Town Hall for patients. There's also the one at Walgreens, the 24-Hour Walgreens, and a couple of other police departments in the county of Lexington also have permanent drop boxes.
Very good. Ms. Shealy, thank you very much. We appreciate that very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And chief, we have 500 in the back of my car, so...
Thank you.
Ms. Shealy, thank you. At this time, we will hear, if you don't mind, pass that down for me. Mr. Corners had to step out. He had a prior engagement he was going to go to. We're going to let Ms. Manus read this next proclamation. It is a Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, along with Lexington Women's Club, recognizing May 15th, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th, 2018, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week, and whereas the day was set forth to honor officers who gave the ultimate sacrifice. The National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund reported that 129 law enforcement officers lost their lives in the line of duty in 2017, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their law enforcement agencies, and that law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas federal, state, county, and municipal law enforcement agencies have grown into modern and scientific agencies that provide a vital public service, and whereas the Lexington Women's Club will place blue ribbons on Lexington Main Street Lampposts during Police Week in memory of all fallen officers and to honor the many men and women who currently serve their communities each day with courage and dedication. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that May 15th, 2018, is hereby declared as Peace Officers Memorial Day, with a special observance to be held on May 9th, 2018, at Lexington County Law Enforcement Monument, and that May 13th through 19th be declared Police Week in the Town of Lexington, and that all citizens are urged to recognize fallen law enforcement officers, disabled law enforcement officers, as well as the law enforcement officers and their family who currently preserve the rights and securities of all citizens, dated the 7th day of May, 2018.
Thank you very much, Kathy, and it'll be my honor to read that at the memorial this coming Wednesday, 9:00. Thank you.
And with that being said, I would just like to say our neighborhood, Wood Creek, is doing lunch for them again on that day and feeding. We're planning for 200-plus, so we're hoping y'all come out in full forces and giving them bags to honor them too with things in them to say thank you for your service, and we appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
So, y'all better all come eat and come home, because there's a lot of food going to be there, is all I got to say.
Thank you. Next, we will hear two proclamations from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston congratulating Ms. Joy Dewitt, if you'd like to come forward.
I'll start with you, Joy.
And Ms. Laney Quickle.
A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, congratulating Joy Dewitt, Ms. Lexington, 2018, whereas Joy Dewitt is from Elgin, South Carolina, attends Columbia College, where she is double majoring in dance studios and psychology, and whereas she is a member and public relations co-chair of the Columbia College Dance Company, and whereas in October 2017, Joy was crowned Ms. Lexington, 2018, and she designed her platform, Joyful Memories, in support of people with Alzheimer's disease, bringing joy through dance, movement, and visual art classes. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that Joy Dewitt is hereby recognized and congratulated for being crowned Ms. Lexington, 2018, and express best wishes in all of her efforts as a representative of Columbia College and the Town of Lexington in the Miss South Carolina Pageant, dated the 7th day of May, 2018.
Very good.
And the other one is a proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, congratulating Laney Quickle, Ms. Lexington, 2018, whereas Laney Quickle attends Riverbluff High School, where she participates in cross-country track and a member of the Beta Club and French Honor Society, and whereas in 2016, Laney earned a top-10 placement in the Miss Junior Teen United States Pageant, and whereas in October 2017, Laney was named Ms. Lexington, 2018, and she is currently promotes her platform of embracing anxiety to bring awareness and support to those who battle anxiety and also works at her school to develop a support system for students who face those challenges. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council of the Town of Lexington that Laney Quickle is hereby recognized and congratulated for being crowned Ms. Lexington, and express best wishes in all of her efforts as a representative of Riverbluff High School and the Town of Lexington in the Miss South Carolina Teen Pageant, dated the 7th day of May, 2018.
Congratulations, ladies.
I can speak a little about my platform if you'd like.
Absolutely, please. Microphone's yours.
So, my platform is called Embracing Anxiety. I developed it because I, myself, actually battle anxiety. About one in every four teenagers experiences anxiety, so that's about 25% of the entire world, basically. And I really would like to use my platform as an outlet to establish a hope among teens that they can accomplish what they want to accomplish, having mental health illnesses or anything, whether it's anxiety, depression, anything like that. So, I've started a program at Riverbluff High School called Embracing Anxiety, and students can come to me or other mentors that I have working with me when they feel overwhelmed or they're struggling with school or anything that's going on, and it's kind of a sense of support. And, you know, that's how I started it locally, but with Miss South Carolina Teen, I'm really hoping to take this to a further level, statewide and maybe even national.
Okay. I'll speak about my platform, Joyful Memories. Like Ms. Livingston said, it is about bringing happy memories and joy to Alzheimer's patients. A lot of them don't get visitors, which is really heartbreaking, and socialization is actually something that can...I forget the word...stop the progression of the disease. So, for them to not have any visitors, it actually helps the disease degenerate their brain, which is not good. So, by me going there and speaking with them and socializing with them, it stops the degeneration of their brain, and I hope to even expand this platform to not just working with Alzheimer's patients, but working in the children's hospitals too. And I want to train my dog to be a therapy dog and to go and help not just me socialize with patients of all kinds, but for my dog too, too. So, I think that would be really great.
Very good. Well, congratulations to both of you. Our next presentation is for Mr. John Bradley. If you are here, please step up to the microphone. It's a proclamation of our Safe Boating Week. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr.
Mr. Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas millions of South Carolinians and visitors to the paramount estate enjoy boating on our state's waters year-round, emphasizing the need for increased awareness of safe boating practices, and whereas boating accidents can occur at any time, whether the water is smooth or turbulent, or whether the boater is experienced or novice, and whereas a significant number of boating accidents do occur due to human errors such as opera and attention, failure to follow safe navigation rules, or excessive speed, and whereas often these accidents, injuries, and fatalities could have been prevented by implementing safe and responsible boating practices, including wearing a life jacket, being alert and aware, and never operating a boat under the influence. Now therefore, the mayor and the council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, proclaim that May 19th to May 25th, 2018, as Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote... and the start of the year-round effort to promote boating safety, dated the 7th day of May, 2018.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Bradley, please, if you would share a word with us. Mr. Bradley is the flotilla commander at the Lake Murray unit for the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. And welcome and congratulations today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say that our primary mission is promoting recreational boater safety, marine safety, and environmental protection. We offer free vessel safety checks for all recreational boaters. You can go to our website, Google Coast Guard Auxiliary, Lake Murray, and you can sign up for a free vessel safety check. We do program visits to all the dealers around, you know, make sure that there is plenty of literature available for life jackets and all boater safety information. Wear your life jacket. It saves lives.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commander, I do want, if you would, point out that if you're on Lake Murray and you're near Lake Murray Marina, Lighthouse Marina, it's the house with the big red flash and the light in front of it.
Absolutely.
Yep. I've gotten a lot of people home using that marker.
Very good. Thank you. Our last proclamation for this evening is from Councilmember Steve Baker. A proclamation for Kids to Parks Day. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Proclamation of the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, South Carolina, recognizing May 19, 2018, as Kids to Parks Day. Whereas, May 19th, 2018, is the 8th Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the 3rd Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas, it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, and hypertension. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to, is it the county or country? Both, both work. Across the county, to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now therefore, the mayor and council for the town of Lexington, South Carolina, proclaim May 19th, 2018, as Kids to Parks Day, and we encourage residents of Lexington and the surrounding communities to take the children and their lives to a local, state, or national park and set good examples for Lexington's next generation, dated the 7th day of May, 2018, Mayor Steve McDougal. And we will mail this proclamation to the National Park Trust in Rockville, Maryland.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Baker. At this time, we will move into a vision plan update for May 2018. Absolutely. Thank you. The Ice House Amphitheater, man, this thing is just on fire. The town of Lexington proudly presents Lexington Live Spring Concert Series at the Ice House Amphitheater. The concerts take place on Thursday evening at 6:30 PM. This Thursday, May 10th, is the band Tokyo Joe. The following Thursday, May 17th, is the Root Doctors. And following that, May 24th, is a makeup date for the Finesse Band. For more information or a full calendar of events for the Ice House Amphitheater, please visit the website, icehouseamphitheater.com. Moving on, the Lexington Wine Walk. Raise your glass for a toast at the 8th Annual Lexington Wine Walk on Main Street will take place this Saturday, May 12th, 2018, at the Ice House Amphitheater from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Located at 107 West Main Street, local musical sensation, the Going Commando Band, will perform great classic rock, country, and blues hits throughout the night. Tickets are $30 each and include a commemorative wine glass for wine tastings and hors d'oeuvres. Tickets can be purchased at lexingtonwinewalk.com. This is a must-be 21 or older event to attend and have a photo ID to enter the event. Following that is the Farmer's Market. This past Saturday, we opened the town's Farmer's Market. It runs each Saturday in May to September from 9:00 AM in the morning till 12:00 at Lexington Square Park. Applications are still being accepted for vendors for the 2018 season. If interested, please contact 358-7275. Again, 358-7275. Or email us at farmersmarket@lexsc.com. And finally, at the amphitheater, Sister Hazel will proudly be welcomed with Georgia Flood on Friday, June 8th. Gates open at 6:00 PM. Originating from Gainesville, Florida, Sister Hazel is comprised of five gifted seasoned musicians whose wellspring of natural talent has been called one of the top 100 most influential independent performers in the last 15 years. By performing songwriter magazine song, All For You topped the adult alternative charts during the summer of 1997, and the success propelled their album to platinum status. This ticket is rain or shine, and no lawn chairs are allowed. Tickets are $28 each and can be purchased online at icehouseamphitheater.com or at CAG Cowboy located at 108 East Main Street in Lexington during their normal business hours. That concludes the vision plan. At this time, we will move into a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The SC 6 One Way Pair Project is nearing completion with work progressing towards the intersection of North Lake Drive and North Church Street. There will be various changes in traffic patterns over the coming weeks as paving and signal work are completed. Implementation of the one-way system is expected near the end of May or early June. Please be patient as we take strides in improving traffic flow in downtown Lexington. The next traffic committee meeting will be Wednesday, May the 16th, at 8:00 AM in the third-floor conference room. Finally, if you're aware of any unsafe traffic condition, please call 358-7273.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we will move right into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing tonight is final reading of an ordinance to acquire property off of Portia Drive. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, moving on. Item number two, final reading of an ordinance to issue combined waterworks and sewer system revenue bonds of 2018. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, that concludes our public hearing for this evening. It's time we will move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Final reading of an ordinance to annex Lexington County Tax Map, number 4496-02-030, located at 5229 Sunset Boulevard. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. SGC Mineral Springs LLC owns 4.3 acres at 5229 Sunset Boulevard and has petitioned to annex the property. An automotive repair and car wash are being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial. Sunset Boulevard is classified as an arterial road, and Mineral Springs Road is classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their February meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classifications for this parcel. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Substitution. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Ms. Williams.
Ramy, did they meet all the traffic requirements that you were warning on this piece of property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Again, final reading of an ordinance to acquire property off of Portia Drive. Ms. Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Scepter Enterprises LLC has requested that the town allow the Joint Municipal Water and Sewer Commission to provide sewer service to a parcel off of Industrial Drive and Portia Drive. The area is in the town's service area. However, the commission has a gravity line that runs adjacent to the parcel, which would relieve Scepter of the need to construct a pump station for sewer service. The town has agreed to release the parcel to the commission in exchange for approximately 0.92 acres of property adjacent to the town's Portia Drive water tower. The property would serve as the location of a new water tower anticipated to be constructed in the future. I make a motion for final reading approval of an ordinance to acquire the property off of Portia Drive.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Final reading of an ordinance to issue combined waterworks and sewer system revenue bonds of 2018. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The town currently adopted Waterworks and Sewer System Capital Improvement Plan for the next five years includes approximately $28 million in projects. The overall financing plan includes a mix of capital contribution fee income, retained earnings, and revenue bond issuances. During fiscal year 2018, the financing plan includes issuance of revenue bonds to refund the $10 million waterworks and sewer system bands maturing on June 1st, 2018. A series of bands provided interim financing for the related projects, and these bonds are the permanent financing. I'd like to make a motion for final reading approval of an ordinance to issue combined waterworks and sewer system revenue bonds for 2018.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Manis, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. First reading of an update to the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. FEMA recently completed an update of the Lexington County flood maps. These maps are scheduled to go into effect on July 5th, 2018, and the town needs to adopt the maps by amending the Flood Plane Management Ordinance. Adopting the new maps is required for the town to continue to participate in the FEMA flood insurance program. I make a motion for a first reading approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. First reading of an ordinance to annex Lexington County Tax Map, number 4496-02-150, located at 2503 Mineral Springs Road. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Michael and Heather Williamson owns 1.18 acres located at 2503 Mineral Springs Road and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being constructed on this property. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential, and Mineral Springs is already classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during the April meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Very good. Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. First reading of an ordinance to annex Lexington County Tax Map, number 4300-07-160, located at 308 Park Road. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Floyd and Jacqueline Corley own 2.7 acres located at 308 Park Road and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is currently on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential, and Park Road is already classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their April meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis again. First reading of an ordinance to annex Lexington County Tax Map, number 4300-04-178, located at 327 Cherokee Trail. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Chad and Michelle Dones own two acres located at 327 Cherokee Trail and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being constructed on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential, and Cherokee Trail is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their April meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. First reading of an ordinance to annex Lexington County Tax Map, number 5426-01-006, located at 349 Railroad Avenue. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Huff Stettler Properties LLC owns 2.6 acres located at 349 Railroad Avenue and has petitioned to annex the property. A small bubble home park is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential, limited commercial, and general commercial. Railroad Avenue is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their April meeting and recommended limited commercial zoning for the property and a local road classification for Railroad Avenue. I'd like to make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. First reading of an ordinance to adopt the FYI 2018, 2019 budget. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. South Carolina law requires town council to adopt a balanced budget each year. Budget revenue and expenditures are attached as well as the draft ordinance. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Very good. Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Manis, second. Substitution. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Poole, will we be able to get this budget, or this first reading approval budget online for folks to see before our next meeting that we'll make the final approval?
We can, yes, sir.
Thank you.
So you're talking about the breakdown sheet for expenses?
Yes, sir. I just think it needs to be out there so that citizens can look at it before we make our final reading, in case they want to give some input.
Very good. Any, yes, Ms. Manis.
And, Mr. Poole, am I correct, in this budget that has been presented to us and that council had a work session on last week, there is no increase in property taxes for our citizens in the town of Lexington? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. You are correct.
Good. And how many years have we not had an increase in property taxes?
At least 28, and I believe it's gone, we've lowered mileage three or four times in that time period.
Thank you. I know how important that is to this council, so thank you, staff, for providing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments? I'd echo that. We brought that budget two days early from the week that it was supposed to be in and on time. I'm sorry, under time and under budget. So very good. Thank y'all very much. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Very good. That's unanimous. That's unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Protim. First reading of an ordinance to provide for the FY 2017-2018 tax levy. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. South Carolina law requires town council to adopt the tax levy each year, attach just the draft for the FY 2018-2019 levy, and as y'all said earlier, there's no increase in 28 years, and you said three times we've lowered it.
At least, maybe more than that.
So, I make a motion to pass that.
Very good. Mayor Protim makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Manis, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. First reading of a capital transfer for the Transportation Department. Ms. Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The existing asphalt roller has broken and cannot be repaired. Also, the Transportation Department needs a small asphalt paver to reduce rentals and a milling machine which will reduce labor and time in the street. Our streets foreman, Jim Bays, has been able to improve the operating efficiencies of the sweeper truck and make some of the repairs in-house. This has reduced the time it has been in the shop, the cost of the repairs, as well as the rental of a sweeper truck. The following budget adjustment is requested for the Transportation Department. Reduce contractual services, $15,000. Reduce equipment rental, $42,000. Reduce equipment repair, $30,000, for a total of $87,000. Add to the capital outlay. Asphalt milling attachment, $21,000. Paving machine, $42,000. Three-ton steel drum roller, $24,000, for a total of $87,000. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker, second. Motion. Any further discussion? Mr. Bays needs a cupcake or something from you guys. Hey, good job. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Moving on to our next new business item, resolution to authorize completion and submittal of a state revolving loan fund application. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The permanent tie-in of the I-20 sewer system to the town's regional sewer system requires the construction of a new pump station on the site of the I-20 Lagoon. The state revolving loan fund program offers loans at low rates and up to 30-years amortization for qualified projects. In order to proceed, town council must authorize by resolution the completion and submittal of an application for project funding to the SRF for the I-20 pump station and Lagoon closeout. I make a motion for approval of a resolution to authorize completion and submittal of a state revolving loan fund application.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Boards and Commissions Applications. Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mr. Jarrett Harrelson submitted a boards and commissions application and expressed an interest in serving on the Planning Commission. Mr. Harrelson is a town resident. I'd like to make a motion for his appointment.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Manis, second. Submotion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Manis.
I think Mr. Harrelson is here today. Do we mind having him stand up just so we can say hello?
Absolutely not. Mr. Harrelson, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Jarrett Harrelson, 104th Pressing Court, Lexington.
Very good. Thank you for applying to be on one of our boards and commissions, and congratulations, you're now a member.
Thank you.
Very good. We appreciate your effort, and I think you'll enjoy it very much. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And also here, Mr. Mayor, is Frank Berry, one of our Plan Commission. Chairman Keith Frost. Oh, I'm thinking. I'm sorry. If I had seen, if I had seen the newly-mayored chairman of the Plan Commission was here, I would have called him up much earlier tonight. So, congratulations to our chairman, and we're glad Mr. Berry's here tonight, too.
Is that all, ma'am?
Yes.
Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Elevator Repair. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The number-one elevator in the building atrium, left elevator across from the conference center, has a broken door drive and is currently out of order. The town has a contract for elevator repair with Schindler Elevator Corporation. However, this particular part is obsolete and therefore not covered in the contract. Staff has reviewed the contract and the documentation on the problem and is in agreement with the vendor. The cost of the replacement mechanism to get the elevator operating again is $15,247. Contingency funds are budgeted each year to provide for unanticipated expenditures of a nonrecurring nature. The budgeted amount for fiscal year 2018 is $197,849. I make a motion to approve, for approval, to have the elevator repaired and to pay for it from the contingency fund.
Very good. Mr. Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Manis, second. Submotion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Poole, how much money's left in that contingency fund?
I believe that would leave about $175,000.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. And I believe, Mr. Poole, I believe that repair's already been done, the elevator's working.
The company made the repair at their own risk, knowing that you guys had to authorize it.
Very good.
I think they have to come and activate it, but not turn it off.
All right. Thank you very much. Very good. At this time, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This week is Municipal Clerk Week in South Carolina, and our council, mayor and council, would like to thank Becky for all you do. This town council is very lucky to have you. So, enjoy your week, and thank you for everything you do. I think we need to give Becky a hand. And also Karen. Karen, thank you. You and Becky are a great team, and thank you for what you do. We would like to wish Mayor Protim Hazel Livingston a very happy birthday on May the 22nd. So, y'all don't forget May the 22nd, and burn our phone up that day. So, happy birthday, Hazel. Congratulations to all the fine men and women who serve on the town of Lexington's Police Department. We are so proud when other agencies recognize that we, that what we know already is that you're the best police department in the country and deserve all of those bragging rights. This past Thursday, Governor Henry McMaster proclaimed May 2018 as Teacher Appreciation Month in South Carolina. So, I join the governor in encouraging all South Carolinians to recognize the dedication and contributions of all of our teachers in the Palmetto State. As you've heard earlier, this Wednesday, May the night, please join us for the law enforcement memorial presentation at 9:30 at Lexington Square. We will honor the end of watch for those law enforcement officers who gave the ultimate sacrifice for our community. Also, thank you to the Lexington Women's Club for providing the blue ribbons along East Main Street and at Lexington Square in honor of all of our law enforcement officers. As the mayor stated in the Vision Plan update, our Thursday concerts are in full swing, and if you have not been there, you are missing out, because Thursday night in downtown Lexington rocks. So, I hope you'll join us this Thursday with featuring Tokyo Joe at 6:30. Come out and enjoy the amphitheater and some great music. And then we have two more free concerts this month. May the 17th, the Root Doctors are back, and on May the 24th is the makeup date for Finesse. On May the 19th, the Sourwood Honey Tribute Show will start at 7:00. Advance tickets are $5 for kids and $10 for adults. And don't forget, Sister Hazel will perform on June the 8th. You can visit icehouseamphitheater.com for a listing of all the events, and we also have movies coming to the amphitheater. May the 12th is going to be a busy Saturday. That morning, the Farmer's Market will be at Lexington Square from 9:00 to 12:00. I enjoy going to the Farmer's Market each year, and I hope that you will come and visit all the vendors there. And then that night, we're going to have the Eighth Annual Wine Walk. It will be at the Ice House Amphitheater from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Tickets are $30 in advance and can be purchased online at lexingtonwinewalk.com. Tickets will be $40 if you wait to get them at the door. The Traffic Committee will meet on May the 16th at 8:00, 8:00 AM in the third-floor conference room. And the council will meet again on May 21st at 6:00 for our work session in the Eli Mack Room. The Planning Commission will meet on May 23rd at 8:00 AM here in council chambers. Thank you, Keith Frost, for your leadership. Town Hall will be closed on May the 28th in observance of Memorial Day, and our town will hold a special election on May the 29th to fill one vacant seat on our town council. The three candidates that turned in their signature petitions will each have a five-minute segment on the town's cable channel 2, which will air at 8:00 AM, 2:00 PM, 8:00 PM, and 2:00 AM. You can also view their segments on YouTube. Please go to the polls on May 29th between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM and vote for a new town council member. Lexington Live is a good name for our concert series, because as you can see from all these announcements, Lexington is alive and growing. We are very blessed to live in such a great community. With that, I'd like to wish all the moms a Happy Mother's Day on Sunday, May 13th, and thank you for watching your town council in action tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Manis. Are there any other announcements from any other members? Anyone have anything they'd like to share? Very good. Are there any questions from the news media tonight? I don't think we have any news media with us. Public comments on the agenda items. Are there any public comments from anyone here tonight about the agenda? Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir. Mr. Baker.
I was just going to say, we have two of the candidates for town council here. I didn't see Jeremy. I don't think he's here.
Very good. If either one of you gentlemen would like to come forward and say a few words, you're certainly welcome to it this time.
Few words. Mr. Mayor, while they're coming, I'd like to say that I watched the YouTube video today of the three candidates, and it is wonderful, and I hope everybody will watch that before they come to the polls. And it was just very good what all three candidates had to say.
Very good. Anyone like to say anything? Very good. Like to recognize the Riverbluff students here with us tonight, especially my neighbor, Jordan. Thank you for coming tonight. Hope you all enjoyed it. Hope you learned something. It was a long meeting for us tonight. We had a lot of presentations, but it was a very good meeting tonight. You see how, what a great place we live, and all the honors and accolades that were received tonight. Anyone else have anything that they'd like to share? Very good. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, May 7, 2018. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel 2